Hello, meeting order. This is a special meeting workshop of the City of Volker. On Tuesday, March the 1st, Primary Election Day 2016, and it's 6:30, 4:00 PM. So I hope that everyone has gone out and done their civic duty and voted. I just saw some pictures from this Kristin and that there's over an hour wait at the Stern Center for voting right now. So it's going past the party. So we always got great turnout. So to be for the record, we do have a forum. This is a meeting, so we need at least four council members present and everyone is present and accounted for. Item three is a workshop. All right, item three is a workshop. Three A is consideration of presentation on utility building transition. And I think that we have a couple of folks that are going to be speaking on that. Mr. Ross, you're going to take the lead to start off with.
Yes, sir. We have placed in your tactic, the policies and procedures, a draft that is being updated. We've had some comments from city council members that we are incorporating into that draft. We encourage all of you to continue your review if you want to bring that forward for adoption along with ordinance of amendments that'll occur on the 15th of this month. And so if you have any comments, please shoot them to CJ and myself and we'll make sure incorporate those, assuming that they're easy incorporations. If there's some that are in conflict, then we'll bring those forward to council to talk about those that may conflict with each other and let you all decide which one wins, which comment is the one we want to incorporate. And so continue to take a look at that if you would. This is a kind of just a heads up part of what's at tonight's meeting. There are some date changes. There will be some changes in when bills are due. Those will have effects on customers. We will be placing those in all of the customer outreach places, the web, Facebook, and maybe even Blackboard we talked about using that as well and make sure all residents are aware of the changes that will affect them. Tony and Christie are here with CJ and myself. If you have any questions or if I were to answer those, that's our current plan.
Just as a note, there are several items that are in the operating procedure that reference ordinances. So we are going to have to, that's one of the things just to know that we'll be coming about on 15th. Will be ordinance changes as well as the procedure itself.
I just want to note that I really like this process. I think that actually included it for us to review. We have, and I'm sure my other colleagues, I'm going to send you an email with our comments and you're presenting it to us in our format on 15th election.
We appreciate council's participation. Your residents, you have a good feel with what Volker citizens think. Christie, do you know approximately how many ordinances this manual references and how many updates we'll have to make?
We were talking about this earlier. Tony, do you?
I think we have two.
Just two.
Mayor, I think for the record, it's ordinance 2013, 11/27, and ordinance 2014, 11/64. I want to thank Tony and Christie and Mr. Ross for entertaining my comments. I appreciate that.
Thank all of you for taking the time. We really appreciate it.
I know that you're working hard getting out the new information to the customers and had a few questions on those. We were able to answer those promptly and I think so far everyone seems to be educated and have an understanding of where we're headed and I think they're all excited about it. Thank you all for your work. Anything else outside of that?
Do you guys just want to kind of call them right now?
Yes.
Carry your pen.
The data process, the conversion and the extraction has taken us a little bit of time, but we finally have gotten all of the data extracted. And in that process, of course, the rereads were not included because to do the extraction, the way that we had to do it and in the manner that, in the timeline manner that we had to do it, we were not able to include the rereads that were done by Senator Trent. So some bills may have gone out that may seem extremely large, and they aren't. I spoke to one gentleman this evening. He called me about his bill and said, "Don't have a heart attack. I've already pulled your big bill. We're looking at it. We're working on it." So some bills have gone out that are incorrect, okay? But what I'm telling the customers is yes, we know they're incorrect. Yes, we have a reread. We're going to get it corrected and a corrected bill will be coming from the city. We have that data now downloaded into the system and people have been questioning the process. There are payments that have not been applied to accounts and that is because when you're in the middle of the conversion, if you change anything, you could screw up your data, which means your account could have her data. Her data could have your data. So you didn't want to touch anything in the middle of the extraction. So there are payments that we have sitting that need to be applied. Now that we have all of the data included, we're going to start hitting that really hard to get that payments applied. And we have a few of the city employees that are going to help us put those payments in because Brent and I are going to be busy on the phone. Also, just to let you know that there are payments that some people are receiving back in emails that are letting them know that their online bill was sent back. I also have spoken with a few of those and we've explained that process. There was a mailing insert that went in with this last bill with Senator Trent. It does look to some of the customers that we have billed them twice in one month. That is not the case. The bill that they received at the beginning of the month was for January. The bill that they are just receiving now is for February. Previously, you read one month. You were billed this month. The bill was due this month. It was a three-month process. Now you'll be read this month, billed the beginning of this month, and it's due at the end of this month. It will now be a two-month process. So they might think they're being billed twice for one month, but they are not. But please, if you have anybody who calls you, please send them my way because I'll walk them through the process.
Thanks, Tony. Any sort of comments or questions on the workshop item A?
Is the city putting out information on ordinance?
We've got it on the web. We will do push down. We can do Blackboard. We need to, I think we're ready. We'll be live with everything by the 15th.
As far as payments online, yes. Data will be live come morning in the system. But as far as someone being able to go online, pay with a credit card, that will probably be the fit because we've got to make sure that all the data is correct.
I thought it made a bit of a shot, like put it on Facebook or something. We may have some corrected bills. Here's the contact.
Yes.
Here's what billings could be of, that kind of thing.
Was that included in the notes that we posted already? Or is that in addition to that?
Not, that's admission.
If you're going to get an additional note, we'll get that posted immediately.
Mayor, any questions?
Tony, if you don't mind, I was looking at the utility hours. Were we going to do an after hour, extended hour?
We will have, we will have an employee that will work now until 8 o'clock. As far as financial and taking money, the office will close at 5, but customer service calls and issues can be dealt from 5 to 8. And then that way they can look at the accounts with the customer. But anything as far as transaction has to take place from business.
All right, let's move on to item 3B. Consideration of presentation on meter conversion and customer interface following conversion of meters under the Seaman's project. We have, everybody up here knows Chad Gopel. Chad is with Seaman's. We've been working hand in hand to come up with our plan for our new meters. We are always really glad to see you because that means we are moving forward on meter conversion. It is important to everyone.
Well, I appreciate it again, Mayor Council. I appreciate being here again for you. We do have some good news, I think, for you. I'll think of that. It'll work my slide. I did bring one in case you physically want to see it. That way you know if you're talking, this is kind of what your staff has chosen as the product or potential choice. You don't want to see it.
It's just a running joke now.
If there's any more brass meter, it's going to be thrown at you.
So just a quick overview. What you've got there is the actual brass meter itself, which is what you've been putting in already. On top is actually a radio with a register. It's all incorporated in a battery. And then the round circular is the antenna. It's an extended antenna. And that would be flush mounted, you know, basically on the box. So people always have the question, how is it going to stick up? Is it going to stick out? As you can see, it's going to fit just flush on top of the meter box. So you're not going to hit it with a lawnmower. If you do run over it, it's, you know, it can take the damage. It's very, very strong, so. I do want to, I'll start here this morning to kind of give you a quick refresher. We actually started this process quite some time ago. You had some objectives that you wanted to meet. One of those being to eliminate the ability to have to manually read these meters. You wanted to increase the efficiency of the way you actually collected the data, kind of take out the human error, as we would say, and really speed up the process. You wanted to be able to quicker respond from a customer service standpoint to the citizens that are there, the ability to give them the knowledge and data that they were looking for in their water usage and their consumption. You also wanted to make sure you were having accurate meters in the ground. As we know, as meters get old, they tend to, you know, fall off a little bit on the accuracy. So we wanted to make sure that our meters were up to date and customers were only getting charged for the water that they actually use, no more or no less. And finally, just really give them a tool that they can have better service being access to that data in their consumption history. So those were the objectives. One of the things that we did first was we actually went out and did an audit. And so part of that audit was we randomly selected 70 meters. This gave us pretty much a 90% confidence factor of the whole system. We tested those meters. We actually pulled a meter out of the ground. We took the old meter. We sent it to a third-party testing lab and we got data results back. The results that you see are up here on the 5/8 by 3/4 and then 3/4 by 3/4. American Water Works Association basically states that on an average resident or property, you have about 15% of your water goes through the low-flow side. About 70% goes through medium flow range and then another 15% goes through high flow. And so when we do the analysis, we look at low, medium, and high. And what's interesting about this is as you can see on the low-flow side of a 5/8 by 3/4, your meters were only reading 80% accurate. Now, what we've learned based on the database and some of the things that we found is that you don't have a lot of those in town. Most of your meters are 3/4 range. One of the things that we struggled with was the data in the database. One of the things that this project, if you decide to move forward with, will address is correcting that so that when you do take it back over, you're going to have accurate data. Some of the challenges that we faced were inaccurate sizes. So in other words, in the database where it actually said 5/8 by 3/4, when we pulled those 70, 55 of those said 5/8, but they were actually 3/4. So you can see the percentage was substantial in a database issue. And so we really got to work on cleaning that up. And so that's been a struggle with trying to make sure we've got the accurate data. The unfortunate thing here is I can't really accurately project how these accuracy would increase revenue potentially from inaccurate meters because I've got to make the assumption that that data is kind of inaccurate and I don't have all 5/8" meters even though the database says. So when we talk about increased revenue typically for these, meaning more accurate, it's hard to quantify. And that number is very small compared to what it typically I would see in a project like this because I don't know really what those meters were or what I pulled was all 3/4" meters most. We had some other challenges. There was missing some installation dates, you know, when the conversion took place years back. Not everything got transferred over. It's nobody's fault at that point. It happened many, many years ago. But the idea is the data wasn't dated. So one of the things that we'll do is we'll have accurate installation dates. We'll actually be doing, making sure that we have the right meter, the right type that's in the ground. Those things take place as part of this project.
Just a quick question. Of your 70 meters that you used to audit, that you audited, what is the percentage to water systems? How do you split that up? Old Town, did you have like five of them in Old Town? And 65 in Cross Creek Ranch? Or how is that?
Good question. So what we did is when we pulled them, we made sure that they were statistically, that there were one random. So we mapped them and then we also make sure that they're statistically, so many out of Cross Creek, so many out of Old Town Volker. And so the idea is we came to where based on the populations that we have and what we know of the system, that they matched up evenly. And so when we plotted, staff would tell you, they were all over. What we know is that most of the ones that are in Old Town were the 5/8. A lot of your older meters that you have in the ground were truly 5/8 and a lot of the new stuff going in is all 3/4, which is kind of the standard that you guys have now for the city is all 3/4 by 3/4. Good question, though.
So if we, we have residents that are living in the downtown area and they're on the, maybe don't use that much water. They're probably going to be using a little bit lower flow. If we go to the...
Low flow would be like leaky toilets, very small. From low flow, not necessarily volume, it's at one particular time.
But if we change the meter valve, likely their bills may be a little bit higher than they're used to seeing.
Correct.
But it may be because they weren't paying for the water that was getting through the meter without being accounted for.
Very good. That's nice. That is exactly, and it's not significant. But I mean, in some cases, you may have, we find, in every city that we do, we find one or two meters are very significant, it can be. And it's basically you got a meter that's reading. I mean, you had a couple meters on the low-flow side that read zero. So that basically meant that that meter wasn't picking up any of those potential, you know, small leak, a leaky faucet, none of that stuff is being picked up. So in that particular case, that new meter is now going to pick it up. The good thing about it, and we'll talk about this a little bit later, is we have, part of the system is a dashboard as well as data that will be able to identify that leak immediately and you'll be able to know and they'll be able to tell the citizens, "Hey, why did I get a high bill? Well, you've got a leak. Here's where you need to go check it." Or once the dashboard's up, they'll be able to see that new situation.
Chad, one question. When you said 55 out of 70 were actually incorrect noted, the question I have is out of those 55 that were really 5/8, right?
So they said 5/8 in the database, they were actually 3/4?
But don't we have a difference in charge amount when the meter goes?
Well, yes, if it's the initial installation.
So when people pay for it, what's actually got put in?
Right. And in this case, we're probably lost some money.
And when you get the dashboard up, what's the lag time? Can they see, is it real time what's flowing through? Does it take a day for a leak to show up a month? How long?
It's usually 24 hours because the data is going to be read. I think you get four reads a day that come in to this particular system. But the data usually has to be uploaded and through the process. So it's going to be about a day behind usually. And unfortunately, I don't think you're going to be able to load a lot of historical data because of what you're doing right now with all the transition stuff. So unfortunately, to see really your past, you know, it's going to take a while for the data to build up. But once that data is inputted in your system, then citizens will have historical usage. So they'll know, "Hey, what did I use last January versus this January?"
So they don't have to wait a month to see the data?
No, you would not have to wait. It's going to be pretty much on a daily basis, that information. You will be able to break that time period down in a graph and charge. You can break it down into those reads, you know, and see. And now the meter itself records constantly, but it only pushes out the data so many times a day. Good question. So the proposed project that we worked out with staff is to come back and actually replace over 2,621 meters. These meters are all at least three years old or they've got at least 300,000 gallons of water through them. We were planning on retrofitting to save, obviously costs. If we've got a new meter in the ground, there's no reason to replace it because you've got Neptune meters in the ground already. The idea is just to put a radio, an antenna on it. And so the idea is 220 of those, when we sorted the database, had either three-year left from the installation data that we had or they had less than 300,000 gallons of water. And we feel that those are a good number to kind of pick and we know we've got some good life left in that meter. And so we want to be able to go ahead and just retrofit that. So you can see up here, you've got a pretty good list. Right now, there's only 35" meters that are in this scope. And we've talked a little bit about that. We continue to talk about that. But that basically is kind of where the project stands today. As part of this process, you are getting what they call a fixed base metering system or an actual, it's called advanced metering infrastructure. And what we're going to do is we're actually going to put up these collectors, which you can see on the right, it's basically a small box. This antenna will actually broadcast a signal out. It goes and picked up by these collectors. There'll be three collectors scattered around town. And I'll show you the location of those here in just a second. They will be mounted on a tower or a pole and the signal is brought in and then it's actually pushed back here to City Hall, to the actual server. So this project includes all of that infrastructure. It includes the software. We'll actually integrate with the new software that you're actually putting in right now, which is the encode system. As part of our installation process, we're actually going to be getting the GPS coordinates of every meter. Because now that you physically don't have people going out, we need to make sure we know who that meter is in case somebody leaves. And so there will be a GPS coordinate, which I understand you guys are looking at some GIS stuff. We'll be able to take that, overlay that. So you'll have a nice map of kind of where your meters are. And as the software kind of builds and stuff, you'll have the ability to kind of look and see some of that stuff. The three collectors that we're talking about right now, where we've done multiple propagation studies. And a propagation study is simply where can we get the best coverage? And I'll show you the map here in just a second. But there's going to be one here at City Hall. There'll be one at Cross Creek, Ben, and Cinco Ranch. There's a water, I think, plant up in that area. And then there's another one right down the street here at the other water plant that's coming up kind of near the new water tower down the road, if I believe off of 1093. If I think, if I remember correctly, that's where it is. But I know I've got the actual coordinates on the next slide. There is also a customer dashboard. And I've got a separate slide. I want to talk about that a little bit more in depth on. But any of the training is included. The other thing that people miss a lot of times, which we've got included, is any curb stop. If we break a curb stop, the curb stop is the valve that's right there before the meter. If you've got an old pipe and we break that, there's a certain distance on each side of that curb stop that we've got to take care of. So we've got to fix. If we've got crushed boxes, we're going to be replacing that box and basically making sure that you've got a system that's good, functional here. If you've got a lid, we have to cut holes in the lids for these types of antennas to go in through. So all that is kind of turnkey from a project standpoint. Here's kind of the map and you can kind of see the blue line is what's represented kind of by where all the meters sit in the city, where everything that's activated right now. Everything in green is where we have proper coverage right now. The beauty of this system is if, as we know, Volker's growing. So as you expand, you're not going to, if you expand north, well, you've got great coverage. But if you expand south, you may have to go in that very bottom corner and add another collector. But that's the only thing you would have to, it's not more staff. It's not more, you know, meat. You've got to obviously have the meters. But the idea is you've got a system that can expand easily just by picking up additional coverage. So the yellow boxes are kind of where the general area of those poles or towers are going to be.
Sorry, are the dots, the blue dots, the meters?
No, the blue dot, well, some of those are. Some of those are just some plots that we used for trying to do the prop study, you know, some addresses and stuff. The only thing difference is down at the very bottom corner, you can see some blue dots. Those are actually not yours. Those were faulty data that came through. That was, those are some of the issues that we showed up with in the database side. But you had some addresses that showed up and were like, "We don't think those are in the database." And so that's part of the issue.
Are we sending water bills down there?
Unfortunately, not. But no, that was one of our concerns as well. And I'm glad you picked up on that because I was like, "Why do we have meters showing up down here?" This is, so we actually worked with staff. We had two live demos of customer dashboard software. We've seen both of them in system. We brought them to the table and one of the ones that the staff chose was a product called Fathom. And it's, their software is called U2U. And it basically means that it's taking the data from them basically to you. And you could see that as a citizen. This is kind of a general graph. I know it's probably hard to read, but you can see on the left-hand side there, you've got kind of a task bar where you can click on different themes. There's a modular that says "Pay Now." That will actually link up to your software so you can actually go and pay now. They can just click from here and actually pay their bill. This is one graph that, and I didn't like to show you, but it's up there. It says, "How do I compare to my neighbor?" A neighbor is not next door. A neighbor is actually more of a generic neighborhood area. And you can include that or not include it. People always go, "I don't want to see that." But there's lots of graphs that you can actually see on and off and you can click on. So that will be part of the setup when we actually do the dashboard. But the nice thing is, is you will physically as a citizen be able to see your usage. You'll be able to tell what's your leaks. You'll kind of get an estimation of what your bill looks like. You can even set alarms and limits. All of this also works on a cell phone app. So you can not only see it on the website, but this particular software has the ability, same thing to work on a cell phone app, an Android or an iPhone app as well. So if somebody wants to be out of town and says, "Hey, you know, want to see if they got a leak or something?" Or if they own a bunch of apartments or multi-houses or rented houses, they can see all of that on something like this and kind of see what their usage looks like. So it's a really good stuff. What's that?
And pay their bill.
And pay their bill for billing. And the one of the benefits of this software was that you as a city have the ability to expand. They have a ton of different modules that you can buy in the future if you so choose. If people want more data, you're seeing more usage, you can do a lot of different things with this. And so the expandability was one of the big benefits of this particular software package.
So can you link in? I see you have social media platform up right-hand corner that's connected. So you could look at your water bill on Facebook.
They can look at your water bill. Yeah, they can. They got lots of platforms. I'm not on Facebook, so I don't know.
But I just noticed that they kind of, the leads are all up.
And it will be customized. So your logo will be on the top, you know, left-hand corner. They can be actual things to put, you know, potentially links to other things. And so it's really a nice little dashboard package that comes with this.
Do you have, some folks have a regular water meter and then they have an irrigation meter. Will that be like, you have to sign into two separate accounts where it could be merged into one?
You can have the ability to see them both on here. And so what you do is this is all signed up by the citizen. So the citizen would have to go out, sign up, they get a password, they get protected, you know, all their stuff. And then they'll do is they'll add their accounts. So if they know their account number, they can add it and then they can see it as part of a list. So like I said, in the state, in the case if I own two rent houses, for instance, and I want to see both of them, I can pull them both up. And when I pull up my name, I'll see both of those. Or one of the stories is, you know, you got a kid that goes to college. You know, you wanted to see this, you know? If you wanted to make sure if somebody's not supposed to be home and they're actually running water, then you can see that kind of stuff.
Chad, as part of the service with you, would you be doing the education to our constituents or to the users of that?
So there's a lot of online demos for this particular software. We're going to do an initial rollout to staff. We'll give them the tools that'll actually take place. I won't be involved with the citizens doing this. What I, you know, have told staff is that if we want to do a talent hall meeting or some type of workshop where we go over not only what we're doing, but if we want to do a demo one night for that, we can definitely do that as part of the project.
I'd like that.
Yeah, this particular vendor is more than happy to kind of show their software. The more citizens use it, the better, you know? So as we talked about, I've got a couple more slides and then I'll be done. We've got some mini benefits associated with this. Like we said, we're going to have accurate meter reads. We're going to hopefully not have anybody, you know, getting free water or using, in this case, you didn't have anybody using too much water. None of the meters read high. We want to have the access to data that they see, you know, giving them the benefits of all that. Staff will have some operational improvements. No longer will you have to actually read these meters manually. All that data will come in. And again, it provides transparency from government, which everybody is looking forward to, is you'll be able to see exactly what's taking place is you'll be able to see exactly what's taking place in reveals. From an operational standpoint, this transition will take place. You guys are going live, as you know. And so any of the installations, if you should choose to move forward, they won't take place till after that all takes place. We can't do anything until after they get that full transition. There is a huge benefit to getting all of this automated and getting the data that you need. So now that you could literally, you know, see data, you can look at conservation a little bit more tightly. You can do any reporting that you want to, TCU, for any water usage patterns. All those type of things will help you plan for future growth and future needs. So everybody wants to know the cost? The overall project is about a $2 billion project, just under $2 billion. As you can see, I've kind of broken it out for staff as much as I possibly, they wanted several of the breakouts. So we can kind of see those up there. One thing I want to know is at the very bottom is, we talked about we're guaranteeing the performance of this. And one of the things that we have to do is test those meters once a year. So once a year, we're going to come back. We're going to randomly pull a sample of meters, make sure they're accurate. Because if they're not accurate, we have to replace those meters. And so every year, that's part of my annual fee. The contract is set where that usually has about a 3% escalation rate. You have the ability to cancel those at any time. You have to keep it at least one year because we have to test the meters at least once before you do anything per the legislation. But that has the ability to cancel. Now, the Neptune is something that you will need to keep on an annual basis because that is the software package that's being upgraded in the state. So you want to make sure that software keeps up to date. And that you will actually have as a contract direct with Neptune. And as you can see, it's not a big charge, but it is something to keep the software up to date. The Fathom now at the bottom, right now, the customer user interface, the dashboard, and the database that they have to use it runs $3 a meter. So right now, with your number of meter systems that are in there, you're looking at about $3 a meter for those particular, giving the access to the citizens. As your population, that's an annual cost. So as your population goes up, that number will go up, you know, as people use it. But they're only going to typically charge it for the people that actually, I think they only charge for the people that you actually use, you know, once you get in the system.
So only user accounts?
I think it's only user accounts. And I need to verify. Did we ask, we asked that the other day? I can't remember. I know we were dealing with two different ones. Okay. I can clarify that. I believe it's user accounts, but I'm not for sure. They may be all of what's there because they're taking in all the data anyway, not necessarily just those that signed up.
So it's about 34,000 annual maintenance fee, annual fee? After the first?
Yes, absolutely. That's correct. Yeah, for all of the stuff associated with it. And again, our fee, you can cancel at any point in the future. You can even cancel the Fathom or either add to it. That's depending on how you, you know, work. It's an annual type contract. I think your citizens are going to love it, you know, so.
So on the Siemens measurement and verification fee, that does not include the maintenance service project, which I believe we've opted out of in the contract?
Yeah, so there is a couple of things. Your staff is going to do the maintenance on the stuff at the plant. We have, we have options to do maintenance on the meters, but that is not part of this package. What that package does is, is going to, it pays for our labor to come in once a year and test, go pull the ready, the meters. We're going to test them. We're going to look at the database. During the first year, we look at the database quite a bit. We actually are going to probably be having quarterly reports back to you during the first year just because we want to make sure everything's staying on top. So any misread or any faulty radio, those manufacturing defects, warranty type issues, we want to make sure we address them quickly. And so when we're looking at that data on a quarterly basis, we're getting a lot of stuff. But that's buying some new meters, putting them in the ground, sending them off to the third-party test and getting those results back. And then if the meters come back and they're all fine, we simply hand them back to staff and you'll have stock for some years. So with that, that's kind of what we wanted to do is make sure you guys got all your questions answered tonight. I think the plan is to potentially bring this back to you at some point in the near future. From a construction standpoint, somebody had asked about a construction. We've got about a month for lead time of equipment. It'll take us about another month to actually make sure that the infrastructure then is put up because we've got to make sure that those towers are all put up first. So nothing will take place at the resident's house for probably two good, solid two months. Once the actual meters start, we'll then make sure if we've got everything communicated properly like we need to and the software transition is going smooth, then we'll probably randomly put some meters around town to make sure we still get it. Once we get going full bore, we're probably going to average between 60 to 100 meters a day. In the newer areas, we're going to be moving pretty quick because we actually got clean boxes and we got clean stuff. So we can get through those a lot faster than we can other places. So you're looking at a pretty tight timeframe here. Now, the backside of this is we always have commissioning and cleanup issues. Those can be communication type stuff. We've got to make sure, you know, things are working properly. And so we need at least a month or two on the backside to get this. So overall, we're probably looking at a nine to 10-month actual construction cycle at the end of the day. May finish sooner, but a lot of that's going to be data on the front and the data on the back and cleanup. The actual work is only going to take a couple of months probably, two to three months.
Chen, receiver radio is Neptune manufacturer, correct?
Yes.
And it's always in the census?
Yes. All of this, everything here is Neptune. As you see, this is the actual product that we put in. The only thing that's not Neptune is the Fathom software. And actually, they have a manufacturer's agreement. The two companies actually work together very closely to make sure that their software talks to this. They've got a partnership agreement that actually works.
Logistics question. So how are we working with the months? Because obviously they're going to have to be involved at some point with this large retrofit, entire change of?
We're the operator, so we control our destiny there.
So we're not going to have any interaction with the months?
We've been informed, we've been informed about boards of what our plant is. We must be finalized, that will let them know. But at the end of the day, we're the ones that operate. They can pay everything over to us. So it's, it's our baby number at the outset.
Another question. About how long, if at all, will the residence water be down during installation?
If everything goes well, less than 15 minutes. It doesn't always happen that way. But in the retrofits, the water typically will not be down because I'm just popping the top off, you know, and you still have water. One of our process, it's a good question. One of the things that we try to do is, you know, we obviously, if we open the meter pit, we're going to knock on the door, make sure a resident's not home. If they are home, we're going to let them know what we're doing. And then if we go and we see the meter spinning, we skip the house because that may mean somebody's in the shower. That may mean somebody is using water. And we know it. And then we usually will come back to it. And if it's still running or something of that nature, then we, we work with staff to get in touch to make sure that the resident is notified. All commercial accounts are scheduled pre, before we actually go. But the idea is hopefully we're quick to get in. We do the curb stop. If the curb stop holds and everything works fine, we can put the meter in, we can put the water back on. We usually try to, most of the time, and I'm not saying it doesn't, never happen, but ideally we flush the line a little bit and then put it back because it may be a little bit, you know, obviously we're dealing in a muddy pit, you know. And so we try to flush the line a little bit and get everything back. But hopefully, nobody will notice that we're there unless they see, you know, and we'll always try to level the ground. If we have to dig up a box or something like that, we'll try to get it back to grade as best we can. Our guys are going to take pictures of every single meter before and after. So that way, if anybody has a complaint, everyone sees an old read, all of that data is recorded. So there'll be a big file with pictures before and pictures after. And ideally, what we try to do is kind of hold the meter up and take the house in the background so that we have some frame of reference when they're taking the picture. Usually they'll sit in a five gallon bucket or something like that, take a picture.
Okay. And would, will this affect, we have a lot of residents on Cross Creek that have water suckers. Will this affect a water suction system at all?
No, because it's the same. I mean, we're just changing the brass and the water, but it shouldn't affect the software at all.
And then installation afterwards? Is it something we're just requiring the builder to?
Just a disqualification if you're all going to contract.
And when will that start?
Once we start our conversion. Once we sign the contract, that'll be the split.
And then you'll tell them to kind of their own and then we will retrofit it?
Chen, I do have a question. The collector towers, it's all been three different sizes. Two different sizes. The 125 foot, does it actually look like? Are they kind of a grid-type tower? Or is it a solid pole?
Single pole usually. It's just a single monopole that will be actually up. There's, you've probably, you've probably driven down here and recognized there's several up. But usually, it's a single chromed, you know, type hole that goes up. It's not shiny chrome. It's, you know, more of a galvanized looking pole. It'll go actually up. There's a single monopole. And the antenna itself is, you know, is usually a four, three or four-foot antenna that sits on top. But it's just a single pole construction. It's usually not a grid type deal. At least that's the case in most of these. And I believe this is the same. The reason is same, tower installation company. Are they lit? No, because they're below, if they are going above, we do have to put an actual beacon on top if they're over a certain height. But all that's part of that. And I don't, I know the 75-foot ones I don't think require. I'm not for sure about 125. There's only, I think there's 125, 225? Yeah, because we had to get, we tried to, we tried to reduce the number of towers that we had. And so we actually extended a couple here and then the one on the far door side to get better coverage. But that's, that other one's way back to by the high line, I believe, you know. And so I don't think you're going to, it's going to be shorter than that by far.
I have a question on the Fathom U2U. Is that about an average price? Were they like higher, lower, average? As far as cost goes?
So cost, they were actually, on the annual subscription, they were actually lower.
And they had a lot more to offer.
Yeah.
We wanted to consider a work order system attachment to this someday. And there were lots of other, the app that the other offering didn't have.
Notifications.
Because in 20 years, that's going to be a big bill.
And we could actually monitor remotely from City Hall the condition of the meters in the field, battery life and something like that with this Fathom. And we could, there are lots of reasons why the Fathom easily won over the other.
And you're right, it can be in 20 years a big bill, but you've got to also look at the size of the city. I mean, the city of Houston's got a big bill too, but they collect a whole bunch of money, you know, as part of that. And it's just, it's just kind of incremental when you look at it. But good question.
I have a question on the contract.
It's okay.
We've kind of discussed that if you put forward to the council exhibits, B, C, D1, D2, and attachments 1 through 6, 12, and then?
Give us back a second.
On subsection 5.4.1, the city doesn't have the ability to identify. I don't know that's a, that's changed and submitted previously, but it's still in the contract.
Okay.
I don't know if we need to eliminate language under Article 6, Subsection 6.1, Subpart M, since the dedicated voice screen, dial-up phone lines will not be necessary under our statement of work in Exhibit A.
Yeah, that's covered in Exhibit A. You're correct. It's a scope. Who can get that out of there? That's, you're looking at the PCA, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay.
And on Subpart, or Article 12, Section 12.5, if we could limit it to state jurisdiction within Fort Bend County and eliminate federal jurisdiction?
Eliminate the federal, okay. Because it says state in Fort Bend right now, correct? Okay.
Yes, sir. And can you talk to us a little bit how we account for meter connections between the November 12, 2015 date referenced and the PCA to the present?
Sure. So one of the things that we mentioned was we had a database issue, you know, as far as the number and share quantities. And obviously, you guys put in meters every single day. So we've been working with staff. They've been actually putting in this particular, you know, from here down with a different type register. So the idea is that if we have a couple of changes here and there, those are kind of built into some of the contingencies we talked to staff about. You know, we get 5 or 10. If we come up with 150 or something like that, we would obviously have to come back and say, hey, we need to get the material for this. And as long as we're doing it kind of here, it's going to go pretty easy. But we would bring that back as a material change of the contract because we've got extensive, you know, more numbers. And hopefully, we will have that happen. But there could be a chance that that could be, you know, 1015? No, we don't. If it's significant, we've got to have a conversation.
And that's just a unit quantity, doesn't it?
That's correct. That's exactly right, yeah. You guys have all that information at this point. So it's just a matter of, we added another 50 and here's what it is. Yes, ma'am?
Question, did our legal team review this contract and comments?
No, we sent them all, we sent it back to Chen.
So we, we are looking at where our legal team has provided, right? And the second thing on the data, you said that some of the data will transfer from our residents. So how far back will that transfer? One year of data, two years of data? What's the usage that you are going to transfer over?
She looks at me and smiles. You will have very little past data because you just don't have the data, you know, in the system. And some of the system is not there. So I don't know that a lot of it will be pulled over, you know, from the actual usage patterns. And a lot of stuff is going to be brand new. So, you know, we're putting in a lot of those new meters. So I hate to kind of step around that, but it's going to be hard. And so we see what data we can actually get with the transition from INCO that you're going through right now. I don't think you'll see a ton of historical data. I don't believe you'll have that.
Because it's got six months of, people can benchmark against, you know, corrections. I mean, because that's going to be the question I mean, because that's gonna be the question we're gonna get from our constituents, where is my past data usage?
Hopefully on your bills.
Yeah.
Hopefully on your bills.
Yeah, and I think a lot of this, may, you know, otherwise you're looking at a lot of manual entry, you know, and stuff, and I think that's part of the, you know, the struggle that they're having right now is converting that type of stuff, so I don't, I don't, I don't think you'll get a ton of data, unfortunately.
I might be helpful to come in and give it to our residents, to see, save your own bills, so that we can compare that actually.
So, the history that we're, in our transition, we are not bringing history. As you recall, I explained to you that the one data is transaction driven, which is done by payments. Our system is done by dates. So, if I was to combine your two data, it's gonna mess it completely up. So, currently, you will not bring any history, you'll bring a forwarding balance, but you will not bring history. The history sits with seven friends, and it is yours, and you can ask for it at any time you so want.
Will we get it from them as a file, as a backup file?
We can.
Agreed.
Maybe something.
We can.
Yeah, and so, you know, that's not uncommon to, during a billing transition, to take historical data because of the manual entry. When we transitioned to our new billing system, the first month, probably all you saw was your current usage, it was about forty-four months before you actually saw twelve months usage history, because all that has to be manual entered, so it's not uncommon.
Can we go forward to have some history transitioned over, so if residents ask for it, we'll have some.
Any other questions? These would be good. Wanna make sure you get all your questions, because I'm not sure when we're gonna bring them back, or what the plan is, and I didn't know if you had a fifty, okay?
And that's really, that's really important for everyone, please. If you do have any questions, or if any thing comes up, concerns, or questions between now and then, it's critical from a schedule perspective that hopefully, if we're gonna move forward, we move forward on this thing, keep everything moving, and meet all the deadlines, and so it's...
Especially with the billing software transfer stuff that's taking place, we're kinda backing this right up to that, and that's what we pushed so hard to get to where we are today, is making sure that if we transition directly, give your staff the data as fresh as possible.
As soon as we get those additional exhibits, with the performance contract, if you can put those in our drop box, we'd appreciate it.
I'll have those together.
Thank you.
Any further comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
How do you...
Item four, regular business. Item four A is consideration and possible action to approve tax payables payable from the period of January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen, to February twenty-sixth, two thousand and sixteen. We didn't have all the data at our last regular meeting, you do have that in front of you, and so I think Christie would appreciate if we paid the bills.
Christie, just to clarify, the packet that's on the die here, that's just a printout of what's in our drop box, correct? Okay, and so that report particularly went through February twenty-fifth, so do we need to adjust our agenda? I don't think we have the twenty-sixth, we're canceled on this particular report. Chris here.
He did, he did, we did, because they're, they're...
So, so this is the twenty-sixth? Because our reports just said this week, that that's wanting sure we're not...
Yes, no, everything that we have there is that's, has an open item report, it's open, everything that we have in our database that we have received, so.
To the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
All right, just wanna make sure.
To ask an ass for that?
Are there any questions?
Will you go over the panels?
Yes.
I make a motion to approve tax paid payables from January nineteenth, twenty sixteen, to February twenty-sixth, twenty sixteen.
We have a second? All right, motion's made and seconded. Are there any comments or questions?
I do have questions.
Okay.
This is gonna pertain to Mr. Greaves' bills. An explanation from Randall Law Firm, those bills that were getting due for trademark, trademark of a slogan that says, "Find Your Future in Full Sure."
Yes.
My question is, why are we trademarking "Find Your Future in Full Sure"? Who asked for it, and for what purpose?
I, CJ, we wanted that trademark from the Spanish city residents, you told me to trademark. Copyright, not trademark.
It's a slogan for the city moving forward, to preserve that, it's our, it's our right. We've had other cities lose their trademark or their copyright statement, to get, to try and get a hold of that.
Is it trademark or slogan, "Find Your Future in Full Sure," because we're afraid someone's gonna steal it?
Well, the "Find Your Future," well...
"Find Your Future in Western Lakes," or "Find Your Past in Full Sure," or something, I just, I just don't understand spending taxpayers' money on a trademark of four words, five words, I'm just kinda trying to understand the, the meaning of it.
Well, we've had other, other issues where we had private organization use certain terminology, I'm thinking back to the scarecrow festival, I don't know, we went ahead and tried to do this, because those were basically stolen or taken from the city. We felt like "Find Your Future" was something that we wanted to hang on to, copyright, so we would have to protect it. And it couldn't be used by any of the others in the production of the city.
Who created the, the language of "Find Your Future in Full Sure"?
Uh, myself, that's my understanding.
Okay, all right, so I explained that one. Second item I have for Mr. Randall, explain Texas Senate Bill eighteen-twelve?
Eighteen-twelve is a funded mandate required by the state to file your condemnation power report.
Which is eminent domain?
Which is eminent domain. It had to be for both these cities and the city, and it was, it's, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's a requirement, and we have to do it, and much like we had to do several years ago, when you had to register, and you'd registered, lost it, lost your right to do, you know, property. So, this was a report from there now requiring you to report, you can only do it on their form, you have to do it online, the computer gets everybody off, the whole state is, oh, up the world, but we did it for every city, representative, every city, every special district, it's, it's required by the state.
And if I'm correct, that was created by the Senate in two thousand and eleven, have we ever filed any type of report prior to this time?
This report is the first one that's due under the requirements which came in twenty twenty.
Fifteen, okay, now, being...
There's another number also.
Okay, being that we're a general lawsuit, we do not have authority of eminent domain.
No, we do.
We do, okay.
We don't have authority, you don't have a, an access.
An access.
We can go convene for a water hop line to, where we need a, this water hop.
So, the filing of this is just basically for future...
I don't know if I'm mistaken, the question, I can't defend all these.
But we did it now, because it's, it was required at this time?
It was required by January, someday in January, I don't know.
Okay, so this basically is, it's just the ID, gives us ID form with eminent domain for our city.
So, somebody can access that?
No, yes.
Any further questions or comments?
I do have one more question, I have a question, I just can't locate it, I just lost it. Uh, Greaves, do you have like a minimum when you're working on to everything, like that you build, depending on like the response, if I'll call an email, that kinda thing? Is there a minimum time?
Minimum, no. If it's a quick, if it's a quickie, it's point one, usually, you know, they're running point twos or point threes, just based on things, what I have to do afterwards, document it, file, assign the research log for instance.
Uh, because I know some recent open records requests we've been working on, you sent me an email, and on here, it references the email, and it says that an email request not received was an hour and ten minutes, so I just don't know what that was, if there's no email received, and it was a...
I have to write public documents, to preserve the privilege, I have to write them publicly, all my clocks that are locked, every mill entities, it's very detailed on what I can do, so, it may, it was a telephone call, it was an email, it was, this is the one, uh, January?
January.
This is the first one I've heard about, I have a request, you were the first one to call, so I've made multiple calls, trying to find out what was going on.
So, it was kinda all good together?
I know it's sometimes...
Because I would think you would say multiple people...
I had, I had the same instance with Ms. Ridge, where she had, CJ, CJ called me, it was a point four building, it wasn't a Hopper, it was a, among our assets, I was pretty, I was just grabbing it off my head, and shooting it up. It was a conversation with CJ, which I thought was a lot of stuff, it was not...
I called CJ to avoid a legal bill?
Yeah, and it's, same with you, Rick, about...
And I did too, I talked to CJ first, and he's like, oh, maybe that's a legal bill.
It's just whoever, whoever...
Because, and, and you, it was like an article I, I received, and then the telephone, and I was just surprised that, I was like, I don't think we can...
Well, that was, that was when I was getting my haircut, I remember you made a comment about that, and so, back to the office, I'm trying to figure out what was, what was going on, for, for us, trying to find it.
So, it was, it was multiple phones, okay.
I do have another question for CJ, I saw that it was some additional information put in by Ms. Messick on kind of a chart showing what year two thousand and fifteen we spent on labor fees, what was our budget?
Well, so, we don't do budget on a calendar year, so, for the fiscal year, for the fiscal year, it's like two hundred, I wanna say eighty total.
How much?
So, I wanna say two eighty, but I've got...
Two hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
For the fiscal year.
Right.
And so, this was...
So, just...
What?
Just changes two months?
Two months.
Well, we have thirty thousand in open record requests already, so, from last year, how, how far are we along this year, January and February, they...
Well, those, I'm trying to stay on the agenda, which has just this...
Yeah, I know that there was some information provided to council members, I think we got that rather late, so I haven't even been able to digest it, but if we want to go through the past year's charges on any issue, it may be best to refer another topic, or other...
Well, just to piggyback off of Ms. Ridge, can we have a breakdown of our average record request costs at the March fifteenth meeting, from January until then?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Because what she's saying is we have the, we have the amount for last year, can we get this year's on the March fifteenth meeting?
How would you lie? Yes.
Same, I'm just...
Break down...
I'm just asking for...
Just a separate statement with the open records request.
Told so far?
Yeah.
From January fifteenth off?
From, no, from, well, just the year...
January first.
Okay, so calendar year.
So, this current fiscal year, then?
Yes.
Okay.
I know it's going to be large, because I have eight open records requests, I've been sending out that information, there are five of you, plus some mayors, and that's six different people to get six, to get six different responses on any different request, so that's forty-eight different responses, and some of them have been watched. And then, and then, I believe on this open records request, there were a couple of charges there, people made requests, they responded to the mayor's emails, on the charge, there was one made on the charge, we got everything, picked it up, there was seventeen dollars in the copy charge for the city, so it's, those open records requests, well, I'm staying on, I can answer for that for this month, I'll give you...
So, how, next meeting?
Well, yes, because that is the first to cut off the month, starting the billing process, it'll probably go out five, we'll have, we'll have to invoice for the fifteenth, do you want something more?
I think she wants to basically break out from January first for this year, to now what the actual cost of land for the easel fees associated with the open records request.
January first, twenty sixteen.
Yes.
Yes. Do we want to discuss a little more, just to... Okay, are there any further questions on the tables?
Yes, I have comments. So, the reason I presented this to the colleagues, since late last year, I had a concern with the height of the legal bills, you saw in my communication that it's over three hundred and seventy thousand dollars, which to me is a concern, so, I've known some...
Does this, let me ask, can I just ask a question?
Excuse me, I just would like to finish it over.
I just would like to interview, I have a question, does, do your comments pertain to paying our legal, our bills for this month, or for this past month? I, I would certainly believe that our legal bills should be watched, if you would like to have an agenda item to go over the legal bills in detail, I think it would be appropriate to have a specific agenda item, the public might like to see that as well.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, yeah. I am prepared for today, but I'll be happy to postpone it until our council meeting on the fifteenth.
Okay, cool.
Thank you.
So, do you want to have a workshop, say, you know?
No, I'm ready to have a city council meeting, if you don't mind, I'm prepared to work the information as well, so we're happy to share it with you or CJ, so I can show you my analysis.
I know that there's some concern for extended meetings, are, is the council acceptable attacking quite possibly lengthy discussion of legal bills onto our regular meeting, or would you like to have a workshop on that?
You mean like an additional meeting?
Correct.
Probably just on the city council, maybe, I mean, but it's...
I'm totally open to whatever the council wants, I have the information for you also, even if I need to just share it in an email to CJ, and then he can forward it on, then we can, I'm comfortable, I would do it in public, so everybody can hear what we have to say.
Thank you.
I'll defer to the mayor's decision.
Now, just so everybody's clear, the dollar amounts are, the dollar amounts, that's certain, to discuss, and bills should be specific enough to tell you what transpired, but to tell you why it was necessary to do the legal work will require you, the council that owns the attorney five privilege, to waive that privilege, we're going to have a discussion, a transparent discussion in an open meeting, I'm just giving you a heads up. So, if you ask me why we did this, or what caused you to do that, if it pertains to advice, I mean, y'all are individuals, and y'all represent the city, I can't, I can't waive the privilege, a lawyer can't waive the privilege, don't get declined here, so, if we have this discussion, then it either can be trumpeted, because you don't want to waive the privilege, or it can be wide open, and everybody sees everything.
I think depending on whatever information Ms. Messick shares with our city administrator, and the mayor, whoever she's gonna send it with, would determine if it's an appropriate time to make, if we want to have a transparent discussion about the substance of the bills, then that colleague would need to make a motion to waive the privilege.
I'm sure, would you translate, I don't think I understood what you said, for me, I didn't understand.
What I'm saying is, is if, if we're gonna talk about the substance of the bills, then, then you would need to make a motion for the council to consider waiving the privilege, so that we can have a transparent discussion about the substance of the bills. The numbers are the numbers, and we can always discuss that, but if we truly want to talk about why the bills are what they are, to have that transparent discussion, we, as great as explaining that we would have to waive that privilege, so, in the, in the vein of transparency, if we truly want to discuss this, then I would encourage you, if you're gonna make that agenda item, to waive that privilege.
Is that your, or is it the law of the land, so would you tell us the law, or...
It's the law.
Okay. I wanna discuss the numbers, and I'm totally open, willing to discuss anything behind it, but most importantly, the public needs to be aware of the numbers behind the legal bills, and the, the information behind it as well, but just to say, I mean, the average home is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, tax rate is sixteen cents right now, so that's basically about six hundred dollars average tax bill per person in our city, the average bill per person is about fifty dollars. That's the average of our regular taxpayer dollars of the legal bills, which, I mean, I just, I'd like to...
Let's, let's cover it in a, at an appropriate agenda, so we don't get into violating the open meeting act by discussing items that weren't properly notified to the public, that's our goal here, is to do things in front of the public, and not discuss something they're not prepared for.
I mean, that has been provided to the packets, and it's part of the...
Well, I just got it at the last minute.
Well, CJ, I don't know.
It has to be on the agenda. I mean, Joe, Joe Palmer has to be...
It was not, it was not sent directly to me, so, and I'm the chair of the body.
I know, CJ is our minister.
The problem is, is that the actual discussion doesn't relate to the legal bills specifically, and our discussion of what the expenditure will over a period of time, property relates solely to the bill that's proposed on, and that's where we would prefer it to be.
Okay. Can I just call for a vote?
All right, we have a motion in a second, any further questions on the bills that are actually on the table for, all right, all of the people, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We have one opposed to the tables, so that was for the tables, are accepted, passed through. Item four B is consideration and possible action to approve settlement agreements between related parties associated with legacy section three, sanitary sewer issues.
Mr. Mayor's staff has been asked, we've had a conversation at this time, we still have yet to get actual numbers on what the subject might be.
Seven.
Oh, a second?
Second.
Motion's made in section, closed phone, any questions or comments? All of the people, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a motion period, closed phone. Item five is executive session, closed session in accordance with the government code five five one point zero seven two, deliberation regarding real property and closed meeting, all adjourned into executive session at seven forty P.M. Is there any action that needs to be taken from our executive session?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
We'll adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Motion, has it been seconded a couple of times? Can we adjourn?
Yes.
All of the people, say aye?
Aye.
We're, all opposed? We're adjourned at eight sixteen P.M.